Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. David Lee is with the Faith-Based Health Enhancement Consultant with the Oklahoma State Department of Health. He will lead us in our invocation. David, if you'd step forward, and afterwards I'll ask Councilman Pete White if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
In the words of Reverend Martin Luther King, "All progress is precious, and the solution of one problem brings us face to face with another problem." As Archbishop Charles J. Chatwood said, "God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our great city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are servants of our authority. Guide us to be leaders of our people in need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us. And Lord, help us to see the humanity and dignity of those, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with reverence, because they are your creation. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of this human experience. We ask this in your sons and daughters, and in your goodness and love. Amen."
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask Tom Pace to come forward. I have known Tom for a few years, and Tom has made a habit of putting people to work and inspiring them to do better. He has changed a lot of lives here in Oklahoma City as a businessman and created a very productive workforce in the process. We have a proclamation that I think will help explain one of Tom's most recent projects, and I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas the Pace Butler Corporation will sponsor 3,000 Read Together, a free event at the Oklahoma State Fair Arena on Saturday, January 28. Whereas during the event, citizens and community leaders will read aloud from the book by Tom Pace, Mentor, The Kid, and the CEO. Whereas everyone who attends the event will receive a free copy of Mentor, The Kid, and the CEO, and The Purpose Driven Life by Rick Warren. Whereas attendees will learn about mentors and mentoring and the incredible positive impact the mentoring relationship can have on all involved. Whereas 3,000 Read Together will inspire Oklahomans to read and to achieve their goals. Whereas 3,000 Read Together is for ages 12 to 100, and at least 3,000 attendees are needed to make this event a success. Whereas there will be at least 20 cash drawings for $100 each, and one $3,000 grand prize cash drawing for attendees present throughout the 3,000 Read Together. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim January 28, 2012, as 3,000 Read Together Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation for Tom and his willingness to get involved, and I know you want to talk more about this.
On this Saturday, January 28, at the Oklahoma Fairgrounds Arena, my goal is to be able to give away, I would say, at least 3,000 Purpose Driven Life books and 3,000 mentor books. I would like to give away 8,000 of each. The Fairgrounds Arena will hold 8,500 people. When I was 26-years-old, I read at a fourth grade level. Today, I'm 54-years-old, and I read a lot better. I'm still not the greatest reader on the block. Reading is very, very important, and in Oklahoma, we need more education in quality books. We need people to read books that'll change lives. The Purpose Driven Life book, written by a minister in California, I've now read this book 68 times. I'm continuing to read it, and my goal is probably 100 times. So this event that we're going to have on Saturday, it's going to be a lot of fun. We're going to have a lot, there's going to be a ton of energy there. It's going to be quick. It'll start at 9 o'clock, and we'll be reading excerpts out of the book, of both books, and we'll have these drawings, and it'll just be a lot of fun. It'll be quick, and so I'd like to encourage everybody to come out to the Oklahoma State Fairgrounds Arena this Saturday, January 28, at 9 o'clock, and we should be over by noon. Thank you very much.
Who should come?
Everybody. We put on there ages 12 to 100. We're not going to close the door on anybody over 100. And we'd like for kids to come out. We wanted to let people know that this is not just for children. In the United States, there are a lot of adults that don't read books today, and so this is really, both of these books can be comprehended by someone 12-years or older. But we'd love to have kids out there. We love the energy of all that. My children will be there, and they're 9 and 11, so we'd just like for everybody to come out.
Thank you very much. We have a lot of great employers in this community, but few roll up their sleeves and get after it the way you do. We really appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's show our appreciation once again. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 17, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 10. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 5, it's a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have several this morning. Starting on page 10, under item 8A5, the easements aren't in on that, so the Act has asked for a two-week deferral on this one until February 7. Again, 8A5. And on 8B, the traffic study just came in yesterday, so we're asking for a two-week deferral on that issue also until February 7. And then on to page 10, under item 8G1, on page 11, under 8G1, item F, 1713 Northwest 9th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. And item J, 2801 Northwest 37th Street, West of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. And on page 13, under items for denial, item 8K1C, the claim of Felix McDougald, the claimant has asked that that be deferred until, for two weeks, until February 7.
All right, any other requests? Any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll reassess the council meeting then and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. We have a motion in a second on the MFA. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Is there any individual consideration? All right, Pat, do you want to go ahead and talk about I?
Thank you, Your Honor. Maybe I'm just suspicious, but the wording in this is sort of scary to me. I know the marketplace doesn't always get it right, but generally speaking, the marketplace has got a better track record than organized planning at any government level. And I jumped to the conclusion that we were going to try to drive planning to the extent that we were going to put the market demand second, and I hope that's not correct. And then, just as a little nit, there's a word in here I don't understand. "We are to inform development of a new plan, to inform development of policies," and I think that word "inform" maybe means something else. But this is a $125,000 project funded by the federal government. It's part of our overall city plan, and I think it's important to have some plans, but I think it's equally important to give recognition that the marketplace is going to drive a lot of this development growth. This is a comment, Your Honor. Question?
Any other comments or questions about the consent docket? Did you need an answer, Pat, on anything?
No, I just wanted to warn people that we don't want to put too much value to this, or put the wrong value to what we give.
Fair enough.
Mr., let me comment on this for a second. You know, I think there's a balance out there, and the market forces play a factor on that. But it's also good to have information regarding to the cost of that development, how that development, various development, impacts Oklahoma City, whether it's rural development, suburban, or urban development.
I'll argue with that for a second, but I would comment that we need to be careful that we don't let our plans and policies take precedent over what the market is asking for, because if we do that, we're going to create some really unfortunate situations.
Okay. Ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Move on to the concurrence docket. Okay, looks like 16 items on the concurrence docket today. Any individual consideration? Comments or questions? All right, let's go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. Item 8A1 is a zoning case in Ward 7. It's an ABC issue at 3921 North Lincoln Boulevard.
Mayor, I talked to Councilman Kelly, and he is in favor of moving this forward, and I would move approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second on item 8A1. Is there anyone here that showed up today hoping to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. That item passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 2. The address is 612 Northwest 29th Street. It's currently an NC, HL, Neighborhood Conservation and Historic Landmark District, and it would become a simplified plan unit development district. Ed?
Anybody here signed up? Any objections? I move.
Okay.
May I ask just a quick question about this? This is under the section where it talks about Development Services Department review. It talks about what the applicant is requesting and the number of uses, and it talks about commercial kitchens for cooking classes, art gallery space, performance space, and animal-raising retail. Do we know what that is? Bob, do we know what animal-raising retail is?
The intent there is to allow them to board animals, small number.
Okay. It's got pre-K, daycare, a fueling station for alternative fuels, a farmer's market, just to name a few. Now, I thought that was a pretty broad category, so I really, again, I don't have anything that specifically needs an answer. I just didn't know what animal-raising retail was.
Is that overnight, or it's daily?
Well, that's the intent. I can get you a better definition of it, but what it really is, it's taken from the NC district. NC districts are pretty broad, it has a broad range of commercial uses. It's not something that's not already allowed in that district, but...
Do we know what they're planning to do here?
I don't know if the applicant's...
The applicant here? Hi!
Hi. Good morning. Welcome to City Hall.
Good morning. My name's James Varnum. Hi.
We'll need your address for the record, please.
Okay. My home address is 218 Northwest 28th Street.
All right. And do you have plans for a use on this property?
Yes. It's pretty much two-phase. There's an existing historic apartment building that was dilapidated that we're in the process of renovating, and the intention is to become a part of the Paseo Commercial Strip, and it's going to be a school for, and a community space for sustainability and creativity. So there will be a gallery, there will be four live-work spaces, there will be classrooms, and there'll be a garden. And so the idea is pretty much everything that supports a sustainable and creative life. It's supposed to be pedestrian, and pretty much allow you to kind of learn how to live locally.
Appreciate it very much, yes.
If that's the case, why do we have all these uses listed then? Can we eliminate some of these uses just in the future to avoid having something that's not conforming to your thoughts right now?
We can do that, and we do that typically on SPODs. The animal-raising, I was wrong, it's still allowed chickens, and it's limited to that. And then the grooming wouldn't be overnight, it would just be drop-in.
You have to raise your chickens there and get them groomed at the same time. But the list of permitted uses is fairly extensive here, and it just seems like we would alleviate a future problem if we narrowed this list down to be more specific to the, you know, objectives you have in mind. Without unduly, you know, confining the uses, I think that makes brought up a really good point. It's a little broad, and conceivably, we could have some ill-intentioned use later on, or not ill-intentioned, uses that are not as acceptable as what we're being proposed today.
Do you intend to have a fueling station, an alternative fueling station there?
Well, the intention is to have a flex car that's sort of able to be used by the community, like a publicly rentable car. And so the only really reason that's in there is to be able to potentially have like an electric spot to tie in a, like an electric car, that type of thing. So I think this was supposed to sort of broadly allow that, just to make sure that we didn't have any problems putting that in in the future.
And I'm not trying to be weird about this, but I'm not sure the Paseo District wants a, you know, CNG station in the middle of the neighborhood.
I understand that, but I think he's right. I think that...
I mean, electric plug is...
That's possibly the future, and be less cumbersome than a CNG station.
The intent of this zoning is to really extend that commercial tract from the NC district, and those uses are in that NC district already. So this is really extending it to the south. That's, that was the intent, and then he added some additional uses, the chickens and the grooming, those things.
Quick question, Bob, if I could. Livestock?
Well, it's further limited to chicken, domesticated livestock. Animal-raising, personal, further limited to small domesticated livestock, well, chickens, for example.
Okay, I'm sorry. Being from the city, livestock to me is a cow, not a chicken, so, thank you.
And how do, we got the ticket, it's more than an acre? Is that how, how is that allowed?
The, in residential districts, you have to have an acre. What he's done here is he's used the NC district as his overlaying zoning, and then he's added that use. So he's not going to be limited to an acre for the chickens.
Okay.
So this is, this is probably the first use where we've added urban chickens in the zoning classification.
Well, that's significant.
All right, ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks for coming down. We're on to item 8A3. It's in Ward 1. The address is 13420 Piedmont Road. It's currently a plan unit development and would become a simplified plan unit development. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anybody here to speak on this, or speak against it, I should say?
We will need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Roan Byrd. My address is 2315 Northwest 56th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73112.
Are you here to speak in favor of this or against it?
In favor. I'm the developer.
Okay.
So I'm just here to really answer any questions, if you guys have any.
You and I talked this morning over the phone. Did you think about what it was you needed to ask me?
It actually was. I called you a few weeks ago because we were going to try to move the date up a week, but we were good.
Talking to Mr. Teener this morning, there was an issue about some signs where you were given an option.
Yes.
Have you picked which two out of the four you are elected to do?
Told him the first two.
Okay.
I emailed him early this morning. Did you get that?
Okay. And you've agreed to the TEs on this? Technical evaluations?
Have I?
The technical evaluations you discussed at the meeting, planning commission meeting...
Yes, I have agreed to that.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, I'll move the item.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions on item 8A3? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Should I just hang up here for 8A4?
Item 4 is the same area, it's just around the corner.
All right. Gary, you want to make a motion on item 8A4?
I'll move item 4 also.
All right, comments or questions on item 8A4? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank the city council.
Thanks for coming down. Item 8A5 has been deferred for two weeks until February 7. Item 8B has been deferred for two weeks until February 7. Item 8C is a zoning case recommended for denial. The address is 5501 South Shields Boulevard. It's currently a plan unit development and would become a simplified plan unit development. Pete?
Is there, I noticed that a protest had been filed since the planning commission meeting. Is the protestant here? I saw a copy of the protest, and it, the protest is basically is, it's a vacant lot and been a vacant lot for a long time, and we'd like to see it stay that way. Near as I could tell, it wasn't a protest to, you know, I can understand that if I lived in a home fairly close to anything, you would want it to always stay that way, but this is not the kind of a protest I think we can take that seriously, really. The property's been zoned for commercial use for a long time. The denial came as a result of the planning commission's request to remove a previously authorized pole sign. As much as I'm personally changing my attitudes toward the freestanding signs, I'm not sure that unless we're willing to just draw the line and say, "This is it," that I'm comfortable in voting against one that otherwise meets all the requirements. If it is going to be our policy, not the, not the planning commission's policy, but the city council's policy, that we're going to take down every pole sign in Oklahoma City that we can possibly take down, then I'm uncomfortable with doing it, one here and then not doing it someplace else. And I personally have voted for too many of them to start to do it. If I don't use this one as an opportunity to send a message that I'm not going to do it again, and I think that's where I am. I don't know where the rest of you are. I know the Plains Commission is obviously very, very strongly opposed to these freestanding pole signs, and for good reasons. I think you look at May Avenue, and if you ever have a question about whether we ought to be against them or not, just drive north and south on May Avenue, and I think you could, I think southwestern is almost the same way. There are other areas that are that way. But unless the council adopts it as a position, and we discuss it, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote for this one. I'm going to move approval of this, subject to the other technical evaluations, which the applicant has agreed to do, which is a sidewalk, and, and the sidewalks are very similar to the pole sign, in that we've made it, we've made it our policy to require sidewalks wherever we have the legal right to require sidewalks. And so I'm, I think that everybody agrees with that policy, and we've pretty well uniformly done that. So I don't have a problem with that, because we've discussed it on this horseshoe and decided pretty, I believe unanimously, that we're going to continue to insist on sidewalks. The other one has to do with some buffering, some vegetation buffering on the north side to buffer it from the high school that sits to the north of it. But subject to the TEs 2 and 3, I'm going to move approval.
I've got a question on this. If the pole sign is the issue, I've always understood if a sign was up, we could not, they could continue to use that sign as long as they, as long as it hadn't, if some time limit expired or something? What's causing this, to have the planning commission thinks they have the ability to tell him to take the sign down?
He's asking for a rezoning and changing the uses that are allowed.
Okay.
So the sign's permitted in the existing zoning, but when he changes to this one, then you can...
So if he wasn't trying to change the zoning, that's when it kicks in, that we wouldn't be able to get him to take it down?
Right. He would be allowed to have that sign under the current zone.
In fact, but in this particular case, the zoning's been, what the property's been used for in the past is what most property on South Shields has been used for, and that is it's been used to sell portable mobile buildings, that kind of stuff, mobile homes, buildings built on-site, sheds, that kind of stuff. I'm not sure that a car lot's much different in terms of its impact on the community as one of those. And so I'm willing to have a discussion, probably not with regard to this case and my vote, but I'm willing to discuss whether or not that's what we ought to do. And if that's, if that's a consensus of this council, then I think that message can be sent, and we can, we'll do that. But that existing sign's been there for years and years, and...
Is the sign still being used?
There's no, it's, it's up.
Because didn't we, several years ago, talk about signs, when Councilman Bowman was still here, about signs that were abandoned, that we could require them to be taken down? If, for instance, the occupant who put the sign up at the original location no longer was there, the sign was no longer appropriate, we, we, the city, then had the option to ask that to be removed, or we could take it down?
This sign, I guess you, however you want to define, it's there. The sign exists there. Because there's not a business operating on it, it doesn't say vacant lot below it, it just doesn't say anything. It's just there. It's up there. And those are, that's true all over town. I mean, you see all the time, they're tearing down hotels, motels, all kinds of businesses, and they leave the sign up, because that's already, you know, it's there, and people that are going to buy the property, it helps them sell the property to have a big pole sign out in front. So it's, in that sense, it's there. It's there. I don't, I can't describe it any better, but it doesn't have any language on it that I can recall. Certainly doesn't have any language on it that has to do with what's going on there now, because there isn't anything going on there now.
No, but periodically, it seems like every year, we have a sign committee established to look at sign, our policy towards sign. And if we wanted to adopt a policy here at the city council, at the horseshoe level, to eliminate pole signs, it ought to be consistent with the work that we call these committees in to look at, because otherwise, they're not going to bother to come if we ignore what they say. And I don't recall reading any of their work, that they asked specifically for all pole signs to be removed a lot.
That's my opinion, that's exactly what I think. Although, as time's gone on, I've grown to dislike them more and more, and I think probably they, we ought to do something. But I hate to make an example out of someone, given what I consider to be a real lack of a, of a statement on the part of the council. I don't think you can question whether there's been a statement on the part of the planning commission. They routinely do what they can to try to get people to take them down. They routinely do what they can to try to get people to take them down, but they're not successful in taking as many down as they could because we don't have a firm fixed policy that says that's what we're going to do. I think I'd probably vote for that policy, but I wouldn't impose it on somebody that's in the pipeline. I'd impose it on anybody that comes up after this. I just think in terms of equity, you can't... If we don't have a policy that says we're going to do it, I'm repeating myself, but...
David?
Councilman, I agree with you. I think it's unfair to select one all of a sudden and begin to limit his or her ability to put one up, but I also would like to see much stronger ordinances with respect to signs and hopefully one day get to the point where we could only have monument-type signs, especially in the newer areas that are being developed. And whether we go through some kind of committee or study, or maybe the OKC plan is the place that we focus on this issue. I really do think, just for the overall beauty of Oklahoma City, to begin looking at that because Councilman White's correct. You drive up and down southwestern or anywhere, a lot of places throughout the city, it's not an attractive area when you have so many signs sticking out, both pole signs and some of the illegal signs that are placed out there, those temporary ones. So I would like to see much stronger ordinances, but I think it would require a more in-depth study, and I don't know if the OKC plan is the place to perform that study or a separate committee. But if you look at areas, especially the newer areas in Norman, Edmond, and some of the other communities that have adopted sign ordinances, and then some of the larger cities outside of the state, they do really make a big impact on the appearances of a city to limit those and limit them to the monument signs. And then if everybody has to deal with it, no one has an advantage if everybody has to use monument signs. So, thank you.
Contrarian viewpoint that I think I've heard is that signs can be helpful if you're looking for a particular business. If you drive up and down Western Avenue, I was thinking of North May particularly, they have a lot of, I mean, pole signs up there. But if you're looking for a specific business, those signs can be very helpful. And putting everything on a monument level, why, it's more difficult to see that until you're right on it, whether or not you can turn into their driveway or see that person's business without having to circle around. So I think before we develop an attitude towards we're going to eliminate pole signs, we need to do it very carefully because they are of some value as a citizen goes around looking for a particular business sometimes.
I agree with that statement, but I would also say this technology has advanced to the point where, you know, on your cell phones and even in your cars, you've got GPS and you can identify a specific address a little bit easier. But I agree, it is a concern, but I think we gain so much more to limit those. And I'm not suggesting overnight we eliminate those. It would be a 10, 15-year phase in, but at some point, I would like to see ordinances that would limit these types of larger, more abusive-type signs. Thank you.
Bob, does state law give us any direction on this type of signage?
No, excuse me. They really deal with, not accessory signs. One thing I was going to say is the council did amend their ordinance and require if a sign is dilapidated that it has to be taken down. So we did add that piece a while back where if we get a complaint on a sign that doesn't have, isn't maintained...
Would you mind putting together with some pictures the type of signs we're talking about? Examples of good pole signs, examples of bad pole signs, and just so the council can get a little bit more breadth in the issue about what we're talking about. Size, all of those types of issues. And then we can kind of talk about collectively as a group whether or not we want to put a committee together to look at it. Sound good? Because I think when you're just talking about a pole sign, everybody in their mind might have a different thing in their mind. And I'd like some pictures that we can all look at and say, because this is what we're talking about.
Councilman Greenwell has asked that the planning staff take a look at the Norman ordinances and see if there's some things we can do. So staff is already doing some research on that based upon some comments made by Councilman Greenwell. And I think that's a great idea. We'll take some pictures and we'll bring back a presentation that we can have here to start framing that, and we'll set up and have some policy discussions and get some direction from council on where we want to go to the signs. And ultimately, if we need to have a committee or an ordinance change or whatever, we can get toward that direction.
After we adopted that dilapidated sign amendment, have there been a number of dilapidated pole signs taken down? Or are we waiting for complaints? Are we making that complaint driven?
We did a sweep on 23rd Street that caught, I can't remember the total number, five or six that were taken down.
Right.
Right now, we're responding to them on a complaint basis.
I think one thing we could do is just emphasize to our code enforcement people that they see one, but they don't have to wait for a complaint to do it. If they see one that's obviously a dilapidated sign, let's start... I mean, that would be a first step toward doing it. If we've already got an ordinance in place that says they're dilapidated, let's try to take the dilapidated ones down. Okay, anyway, I have a motion for approval. I can tell you that from Pete and I's history with the sign committee and going through the LED sign and all the stuff that we were doing, there are so many issues out there because is it, are pole signs, do we want to get rid of them because we just don't like the pole? Or is it the height? Because they're allowing monument signs that are as tall as the pole signs anymore, and the only difference is they put brick around it and make it look nice. And they, you know, I mean, there's a whole lot of issues out there other than just the steel poles sticking up there and you don't like that. So I applaud us looking at it, but this won't be an easy fix, trust me.
One thing Gary and I discovered in that thing is the city or its agencies own several of these signs all over town. We own them. They're ours. And so that makes the pot and the kettle argument kind of interesting. But anyway, we have a motion on this one.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and the motion is to approve this zoning request.
Eliminating TE number 1, but with the condition that number 2 and number 3 are complied with.
All right, and the second, I guess, refers to that last commitment, too. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Do we need the emergency on this?
Honestly, the applicant would like the emergency. I'm a little hesitant to remove things with the emergency that have a protest. So I'm not, I know we talked at some length yesterday about why he needs it, but with the protestant out there, the whole idea of an emergency is to give an opportunity to get the business going, which is what he wants to do. The other side of the coin is, the reason for the 30 days is to give anybody aggrieved of it the opportunity to complain. And so when I have a protest, I just generally don't move the emergency.
Well put. All right, let's move on then to item 8D. This is an ordinance being introduced today. And Councilman McAtee, I know you've been involved in the formation of this policy, and Cindy Richards is here to kind of explain it to the rest of the council.
Yeah, just to introduce Cindy coming up. We had a meeting several weeks ago. Bill Citi was in the meeting from the police department. Cindy and some of her lawyers were here. And it came out of a situation that is going on where some clubs have adult entertainment, a conditional use permit to do that, and they're strictly legal. Whether you like them or not, they're strictly legal. There are a number of other locations around town which do not have this type of conditional use, and they are conducting the same type of adult entertainment. And we've had citizen complaints, we've had requests for enforcement. And so the group got together, and out of that is what you'll see right here that Cindy's going to talk about. So Cindy?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Cindy Richards from municipal councillor's office. This is how the issue came up, as Councilman McAtee explained it. The municipal councillor had the idea that maybe an effective way of addressing some of these issues would be to look at our criminal nuisance abatement ordinance. And as you may recall, that ordinance was drafted several years ago, and it's been limited in its scope to a few certain types of violations of city ordinance that rise to the level of after a certain number of violations within a 365-day period, the council has pre-declared through the ordinance that that would then be a nuisance. And the city manager then can take action to instruct the municipal councillor's office to go file a nuisance lawsuit in district court. So essentially what it does is it takes out a step of having to come to council to present the whole case of what's going on and have you specifically declare a nuisance because you've pre-declared it by ordinance. And that's been limited in scope, and it applies to certain real property that has certain types of violations, and it also applies to vehicles that are being used in certain types of crimes. So we looked at that, and what we determined is that we could add adult entertainment-related convictions into the type of activity that would be a nuisance after a certain number of these occurred. While we were at it, you know, this was a very lengthy ordinance when it was drafted, and there wasn't a state law to model after, so this had to be created kind of from the ground up. And so we've gone back and found a few housekeeping measures that while we're presenting this adult entertainment issue, we'd also like to clean a few things up. And so I just want to go through those with you real quickly. We've been working a lot with not only the criminal nuisance abatement unit over in the police department, and they are fabulous at what they do, but also with the vice unit. And we've been dealing a lot with disorderly house violations, so we'll be bringing that into the amendments here to go into the part of the bar and tavern-related violations. Sometimes bars aren't in bars. Sometimes they're in houses and they flash up and then they move. And those are very hard to get within any of our particular standard ordinance violations, so we've had to rely a lot on disorderly houses. So that's another kind of substantive issue we want to add in here that they can become a nuisance also. So disorderly houses, the adult entertainment-related violations. And I want to say while we're on that particular definition, it's on my page 6, I don't know if here's our number the same way. I need, since this is going with emergency today, we need an amendment from the floor. This currently says that there's a violation if you fail to apply for that conditional use permit. We don't want it to be a failure to apply because that would allow for a technicality. We want it to be a failure to obtain the conditional use permit. So I just need an amendment from the floor to strike "apply for" and replace it with the word "obtain." The other things that will happen in this ordinance is we're going to add the statutory definition for prostitution. It's already kind of a part of the ordinance, but we want to bring in that statutory definition. We need to correct a cross-reference to Division 5 of Chapter 35. We want to clarify the notice requirements that are certainly, that are currently there. We pretty much changed non-intoxicating beverages to low-point beer everywhere in our code book, but we missed this one before, so we need to change that here. We'll add the adult entertainment-related violation as a violation that establishes a nuisance. And then finally, one of the other things we found in practicality is where we had talked about that three violations equals a nuisance. In reality, what would happen is the third violation was the triggering for notice to be sent to the owner and operator. And then you'd have to have a fourth violation, a violation after that notice went out before the nuisance actually was established. So what we want to do is correct that to get to council's original intent, and we want notice to go out after two violations, and then the third one is the one that can send us over to district court. So those are kind of the changes in a nutshell, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Larry, you want to make the items, the amendments that she asked for as part of your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make that to change "apply" to "obtain" and then move the ordinance as it's been presented.
All right, and this item is just being introduced today, so no vote, no final decision is being made, is that right?
I believe this is being presented with emergency, Councilman. Do you...
Yes, with emergency.
With emergency.
I'm going to second it for the purpose of discussion, but that's my question, is I thought we didn't, we decided not to do this anymore, that we introduced ordinances...
As much as I'm in favor of this ordinance, I think waiving the emergency is a mistake because it does have an impact on the public, and the public, I have an opportunity to comment on. So I think we ought to follow our regular process, introduce it, a public hearing, then adopt it. I know it slows it down. I'm in favor of the ordinance 100%. However, I do think we need to maintain the integrity of that process before.
Just to clarify, the original resolution on the three public hearings does provide an exception for it to be introduced and adopted with the emergency, but it's entirely up to council whether you want to go through the three public hearing process or you want to adopt it with the emergency today.
Well, I think the emergency would be important if we had an ordinance that didn't have as much direct impact on the public. And I think this is a case where there is an impact on the public, maybe not a bad impact, but there is an impact on the public. We ought to give them an opportunity to present their side of the issue and then go forward in our regular process.
Larry, is there a reason this needs to be adopted immediately necessarily?
Well, you know, we've been operating this way for quite a while. There are cases out there that the police have indicated they would like to be able to move on, so that's the only thing. Will the world come to an end if we go through the process? No, I'll leave it up to the discretion of the council.
Okay, let's take one step first. Let's vote on the amendment. I don't think anyone is arguing that the amendment is part of this motion and this concept, and if the amendment wouldn't fail, then we're probably wasting our time here. So if everyone's ready to vote on the amendment, we'll do that. Cast your votes. Okay, the amendment passes. So how do we get from this being written to be introduced and adopted to not being adopted today?
You actually just have a motion, I'm sorry, Francis, you have a motion on the ordinance.
Right.
You can go ahead and vote on that, and then you have to have a motion, a separate motion on the emergency. If someone wants to make a motion on the emergency and that needs a second, too, so they should be treated separately. Just go ahead and do the ordinance first and...
Well, we just want to adopt, we just want to introduce the ordinance. That would be the motion, not adopt.
If the emergency does not pass, then the ordinance is considered introduced and set for hearing on February 7th. So it will depend on the vote of the emergency, and you do need seven affirmative votes for the emergency. If it's not approved, the ordinance is considered introduced and set for hearing on February 7th.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on the ordinance that's introduced, and then we'll vote on the emergency separately. Sound good? All right. That's all we're voting for right now? Yes, that's right. We'll vote on the emergency second.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the date that it would become effective if we do not pass the emergency.
Okay. It will be set for public hearing on February 7th, and then on February 14th, it will be on the agenda to be adopted with the emergency. If the emergency passes then, then it's effective immediately upon publication, which would be February 15th. If it passes without the emergency, then it's effective 30 days after adoption.
If it doesn't pass with the emergency today, we'll just kick in the three public hearing process, and you'll have a second public hearing on the 7th, and then the final hearing on the 14th.
Right.
With that in mind, wouldn't that provide people who have a concern about the adoption of this ordinance, the opportunity to speak to us?
It would.
Even with an emergency? Yes. Yes.
Two more. Yes, that's if the emergency fails.
Today.
Today.
I'm sorry. I was thinking with the emergency, they would still have until February the 14th.
No, not as written, not as what we have.
I'm sorry. So without the emergency, it would become effective February 14th?
No.
Yeah, it'll come up for a vote then.
You will introduce it today. If the emergency fails today, it's just introduced. Then it's on for a second public hearing on February 7th.
Yes, sir.
Then it is on for final hearing on February 14th. So as long as the emergency doesn't pass today, people will have two additional public hearings to come forward and address the council.
And then if I may clarify it, on the 14th, we could at that point in time ask for an emergency clause to where it become effective immediately.
Correct.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to clarify that we can still enforce violations of ordinance in the interim. Code enforcement can still go out on a conditional use permit, vice can still go out on other viol... violations, and we can prosecute those. They just won't count toward nuisance activity under this ordinance until this ordinance is passed. So that's the practical effect.
Okay. First, we're going to vote on the ordinance, then without the emergency. Yeah, Larry?
I just got to make a comment, I guess. I'm a little bit perplexed personally. This is an activity that's going on that is clearly, we are getting people going around the law, they're doing things that are illegal, and I'm not going to hold it against that, but I am going to vote to introduce it and have it effective today. So you all do what you see is best, but I think we ought to move forward on this. Cindy brought up a point that I did not think about when I said, well, it doesn't make any difference, and that is that we are going to keep score on this. If this goes through, we are going to keep score on these violations. And any violation that is from this point in the past does not count. And so any violation that were to occur between now and, say, February the 14th or 15th would not count. And so we're just delaying what I think is something that we really need to go after. And we've got a number of things on television recently about prostitution activity going on, trafficking in human, this is just one other thing, trafficking in humans, this is just one other thing, and I think we ought to move forward on it as expeditiously as possible. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, we're first voting on the ordinance as introduced. Cast your votes. The ordinance passed unanimously. Larry, you want to make a motion on the emergency?
I'll make a motion on the emergency.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and we need seven votes out of the eight to pass the emergency. Cast your votes, and the emergency fails 4-4. Moving on to item 8E, this is another ordinance that's being introduced today. Public hearing will be on February 7th, and Marcia's coming forward to explain what this ordinance would do.
Good morning, Mayor and council. With me today are Debbie Reagan and Brett Weingart. We are pleased to introduce a proposed ordinance that will amend the process we use to calculate our residential customers' sewer charges. The winter period average is the process we use to set the maximum amount that any residents will be charged for sewer service during the course of the following year. During the course of the following year, today I'll show you a few slides that show you how that's actually calculated, and why we think this is a fair and good change. The current process is to use four consecutive months out of a total of six, October through March, to calculate the bill. The lowest of those four consecutive months is calculated every year, so that we try to choose the best least change for our customers. But as you know, the weather changes. So today, we're using October through February. This is a typical use pattern for residential customers. It shows you that the six months that could be used, and generally consistently, we look at November through February as the four months that are actually used in making the The Wire Utilities Trust asked staff to look for ways to make this process simpler and clearer for customers so that we, so that they know what will happen every year. Staff determined that changing to three-year fixed period, three-month fixed period of December through February would be the most accurate and also the most simple to remember. It's simply, we're cutting out months that are more likely in the fall to have yardwatering, and again, customers will know in advance that we'll be focused on these three billing months. This slide shows you the process. We begin in October of 11. We would now use, currently, we'd use a six-month period through March of 12, and we'd apply that from April of 12 through March of 13, when we calculated a new measure. In the new process, we'll just use November through February, and we'll apply that again from March through the fall, through March of 2013. This is a sample customer with four House members. Their average bill this winter would be 9,000 gallons a month. Whether we're using less than 9,000 gallons a month, they'd be billed for only that amount. We compared our billing cycles in 2010 with calendar year 2011. The winter in 2011 was very dry, and in fact, customers used about 5 percent more water throughout 2011 than they did in 2010, while we grew customers 1.2 percent. We thought those numbers compared very favorably with an increase in volume of only 2.6 percent, given those conditions, and feel again that we're being, that we're being fair. So in summary, the averaging period would change from six months, choosing four each year, to consistently choosing three months, December, January, and February. We believe that very few customers will see a change, and that that would mirror changes that they see using the current system. And again, it gives you a little more freedom to not think about, to not think about this process. I'd be very happy to answer questions.
Questions for Marcia? Yeah, Pat?
This is a great idea, because I've had difficulty from time to time, over the six years I've been on the council, trying to explain our process to a customer who sees a significant change in winter usage from year to year. And so adopting three months that are consistent, we use all the time, I think will be very helpful in explaining our process to the citizens who are careful enough to read their water bills. Most people don't pay attention to it, except they just complain it was too high.
Any other comments or questions on this concept? All right, just being introduced today. Marcia, thank you. Still need a motion to have it introduced and accepted? Cast your votes. Item is introduced, set for public hearing on February 7th. On item 8F, this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. There is one item listed. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under this item at 2224 Northwest 11th Street? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G?
You have the items.
All right, cast your votes on 8G. Passed unanimously. Item 8H, I understand we do not need executive session?
Correct.
Okay, how about a motion then on 8H?
Look at it.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I, I understand we do need executive session?
Actually, that can be stricken now. Subsequent to yesterday, the municipal council's office won a motion for summary judgment on that, and so that can be stricken.
Yes.
All right, so it looks like we do not need executive session?
Yes, I understand.
Or stricken entirely?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't even need to vote on it?
But this law firm they talk about here, is that a local firm? Have we done business, or have we been opposed by them before? Antonio Brown?
Only his plaintiff's attorneys.
Okay. And have they all been personnel, personnel-related kind of things?
I'm not positive about that, but I can check on him and let you know.
Just curiosity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we're going to strike item 8I and move on to item 8J, and I understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to move that item into executive session?
Move the item?
Cast your votes. That item is moved to executive session. On item 8K, it's claims recommended for denial. Has anyone signed up to speak? Is anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8K, claims recommended for denial? All right, how about a motion?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak about any of the four items listed under item 9? All right, how about a motion? Move it. And a second? Cast your votes on item 9. Passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Ed, you want to get us started today?
I do, two items. One, I went on a tour of the Occupational Health Clinic with Diana Barry. I just, I really think she is on to something there, those and others that are helping her. That clinic is very impressive. I think they're saving taxpayers a significant amount of money. It makes me think about the $70 million that we spend, or the taxpayers spend on healthcare for some 11,500 active employees and retirees. And then, and whether we could extend that idea of using physician extenders to provide some level of primary care, and whether that could result in savings for us. I really think it could be applied to pharmaceuticals. If you look at the amount that the taxpayers spend on prescriptions, it's about excluding one particular United Healthcare Medicare Part C plan, it's about $18.6 million for 11,500 employees. It's about $1,600 for every active employee or retiree. Physicians, clinics, entities, when they have that, much, much less volume than that, they start their own pharmacies, where they contract with pharmacies, they start buying in bulk, and they realize either significant profit or savings. And I just, I think that's a way to potentially save the taxpayers a tremendous amount of money. Secondly, more importantly, my thoughts and prayers go out to Skip Kelly and his family. It's been an intense week. Reading the blogs, the comments on News OK, the, I already knew this, but it just drives home for me that the public really, that much of the public does not understand the magnitude or the nature of these problems, do not understand how commonplace this is, how it is affecting all of us. Any day in America, there are some 700,000 people in treatment for alcohol abuse, or alcoholism, or chemical dependency. It's more common in men than in women, but women are catching up, especially elderly women. You're talking about somewhere between 10 and 20 percent of all men either engaged in alcohol abuse or alcohol dependency. If you think about that number, it's mind-boggling. There was a time when we didn't talk about cancer because of stigma and shame, and people didn't get treatment because of it. I think it's time for us as a society to start talking about these things openly. If you think about, you go to your doctor, your dentist, your lawyer, your lawyer represents you, your dentist, your fireman, your plumber, your electrician, and you've got a 1 in 5 chance, or 1 in 10 chance, that that person is suffering from alcohol abuse or alcohol addiction, that is, that's overwhelming. And we have, in medicine, developed an entire field for it. We just, we have pulmonologists for lungs, nephrologists for kidneys, on and on. We now have addictionologists, that's an entire, that's their whole job, is just dealing with addiction, because it's so commonplace and affects society so much. We do not use words like good and bad. We do not use words like good and evil. We use words like healthy and unhealthy, sick and well, and the judgment is not productive. If someone were showing up in the emergency room, a diabetic, in diabetic ketoacidosis crisis, we don't judge them. We say, well, we need to educate them, we need to teach them the treatment for that, and give them the tools, and then, and then there just isn't the judgment. I think the same needs to apply here. I have seen exceptional courage and bravery on Skip Kelly's part in the last few days. I am very proud to call him my friend, and I'm very proud of him. And I'd just like to see, he's been very high-functioning, in my opinion, with one arm tied behind his back. I'd like to see what happens in the future when he has an even playing field. Thank you.
Gary?
No.
Okay, Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank the neighbors of Windsor Forest for a great neighborhood meeting that my wife and I were able to attend last week. I appreciate their input as far as what they see as the priorities that the city should be looking at as we move forward. And then Kenny, if you would, pass along to, oh, Kenny's not here, okay. City manager, if you would, pass along to Kenny. Really appreciate the efforts of Amy Carpenter. We just approved, okay, we just approved an item on the agenda dealing with the Rio de Bella addition. It didn't have that much emotion for you and I sitting here, but it sure did to the people who live down there, whose construction projects were put on hold due to the inability to move forward because of a developer going out of business. And she was most persistent in getting this thing through the courts and getting the agreements put together, and so my hat's off to her, and I know the residents down in the Rio de Bella area in South Oklahoma City are very, very thankful for her efforts. Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Pete?
I'd just like to second Keston and Shadid's comments about the problems of alcoholism. I've spent the better part of my life dealing with those kind of problems, but for the grace of God, not in my life, my personal life, but in the life of my family and and a number of other people that are very close to me. And I, I think Skip's going to need all the help that we can possibly give him, and I appreciate, again, appreciate what Councilman Shadid had to say about that. On another topic, with regard to the concerns I've expressed previously about the lack of reporting requirements in our ethics rules, Councilman McAtee pointed out to me that that perhaps I've let that, I've sounded like that's the position of this council, and I recognize that it's not the position of this council. That's the bully pulpit that I get every Tuesday because I have a television camera in front of me, and that's my personal concern. So I don't want anybody to attribute anything I've said in the past about the Ethics Commission to be, and that's the city's position. I would tell you, that's my position, and I think last Tuesday, a number of people that are here indicated they agreed, at least to some extent, with my position, but it's not the position of the council, and it's not the position of the legislative committee. However, we will have a legislative committee soon, and I plan to bring it up and try to try to get a more firm position that'll be brought to the council as an official council position. But I would say that after the last couple of meetings, I continue to be disappointed. I fully understand what the Ethics Commission is, does. I know their problems with regard to not being funded. It's tragic that we don't fund them well enough to do their job, to have any kind of enforcement activity. What I'm disappointed is, is that they have had the opportunity, time after time over the last several months, to stand up and say to the legislature, the system that we have is now broken. Our laws are unenforceable. Citizens United changes the dynamic, and we need to change those rules. They've not, in my opinion, done that. They've passed that along, well, we can't do it until the legislature does it. Well, they have the same bully pulpit every time they meet that I have when this television camera comes on at the end of our meeting, and I would, I'm disappointed they haven't used it. They are the last bastion of hope for making elections ethical, legal, fair, and I'm just disappointed they haven't, they haven't gone out and said, we understand fully what Citizens United did to our current law. You can argue one, either way you want to, about whether Citizens United is a good law. I think most of you can tell by my comments what I think. I think it's a bad law, but that's not what it's about. It is the law, and we have to find a way to have good, fair elections inside the terms of what the Supreme Court said. And disclosure is still permitted, and it's time that they face that. And I'm going to, I'm going to urge at our next legislative committee that we take a much stronger position. We advise our legislative liaisons to do that, and that we take that position from the horseshoe. But I don't want anybody to misunderstand and read what I've said to be that I'm the mouth for the whole council. Surely, after anybody's watched me for the last 20 years knows that my mouth is generally my own, and sometimes that's been good, and sometimes that hadn't been. But I don't want to attribute things that I've said to anyone else on the horseshoe. It's just my view about it. And anyway, I just wanted to clarify that.
David?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I do have quite a bit, and I'll try to be quick, because I'm looking forward to the presentation from the Oklahoma City Zoological Trust. But first of all, I'd like to thank Councilman McAtee and Councilman White for joining us at our community meetings last week, especially the one on economic development at the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, as well as City Manager Couch attending there, as well as, it's surprising, as we had meetings throughout the week, how many staff people from the city live in Ward 5, at least, that's my impression. But anyway, I appreciate everybody's attendance, and also the hosts, which include the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, Emmaus Baptist Church at 160th and Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, Imaeus Baptist Church at 160th and Southwestern, and then finally, Oklahoma City Community College. One item that came out of those community meetings, that is a little bit, I don't want to say it's a problem, but we only have like 135 police officers in the Santa Fe Division and they cover 300 miles. And that may sound like it's inadequate staff and they do a great job. But when you think in terms of, there's three shifts and you divide that number up by three, sometimes we have as few as 11 police officers covering those 300 miles. What I'm trying to say is, as we move forward, beginning next week, looking at our budget going forward, I'd like to see if we could identify a number that we think needs to be added and if we could, let's say, just for example, it's 100 police officers and say, over the next five years, we'd like to attempt to add 20 a year and, for example, the Fire Department, especially as we add three new fire stations, if we say the number's 50, you know, look at a plan over the next five years to be able to achieve that increase and code enforcement, there's only 10 code enforcement officers to cover over 50,000 calls last year and, and that's down from the height, the past few years, of over 80,000. So I just think we need to look at that and there's two ways we could do it. We could increase sales tax rates, but I'm not proposing that. So if we could increase the revenue base by increasing more jobs here in the city, the efforts in the area of economic development, I think would go a long ways to allow us to improve the services that we offer the citizens and the way we can pay for it is attracting new jobs. So in business, sometimes you have to pay money to make money and as we look at maybe other types of outlets to help in the area of economic development, maybe help the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce and other organizations that get involved with that, I think the success that the city has, as noted with all the publications, that it continues to be listed, if not number one, at least in the top five on just about every type of business and quality of life survey, we now can approach economic development no longer in a, a feeling of desperation, but in a, a sense of strength because we are so attractive as far as businesses and individuals. Let's take advantage of that. Let's help the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce and other organizations that work in economic development and really take advantage of that and see the results. And speaking of economic development, that was a great presentation that we had from the various speakers last week and we've already identified two very interesting companies that have interest in South Oklahoma City and I think that's only gonna continue to improve. So thank you. And also, I'd like to say, I do appreciate Councilman Shadid's comments concerning Councilman Kelly and, as well as Councilman White, and I share those and I know it'll work out for the best and, and our prayers go out to him and his family as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. I guess I'd just like to add my voice as well to support for my friend Skip. I really continue to be incredibly excited about the way our neighborhoods are coalescing and recognizing that, that they can do an awful lot to help grow our city in partnership with the city. And I just want to compliment 23rd Street, that group of merchants along there, sort of surrounding the Tower Theater. I know, Ed, you've been actively engaged with them as well, but I really am beginning to see things take hold. This is a, a strip, old commercial strip that lots of folks have tried and it just hasn't really gotten traction and we're finally beginning to get traction. They've set up a series of committees and they're working very closely with our planning staff and with our Development Services Group. They've had some code enforcement sweeps, kind of to test out the area and things are going really well. And so I want to encourage them to continue to meet. And I would say the same thing about the Crestwood Neighborhood and the Trolley Track Coalition, working together. Kim Cooper Hart from the Planning Department spent some time with them and they have really ambitious plans of, you know, working along May Avenue and really seeing that commercial neighborhood redevelop with the support of the neighborhoods. And so I think, you know, we're really seeing where the successes of lots of our commercial districts surrounded by historic neighborhoods are beginning to, to take hold. And so Russell, to all of your staff and also to Development Services, thanks so much for helping be a spark to get them started. Thank you, Mayor.
Pat?
Your Honor, thank you. This is associated with the article in the paper that, excuse me, talked about Councilman Kelly's experience. I share the comments that have him here. Skip's a friend, a good councilman, and I hate to see him in this situation. But one of the things in the paper that got my attention was this failed, a failed sobriety test, I think. Because they wanted to explain it was a policeman waving his finger in his face and his heads and eyes have to follow somebody. It seemed like that it was a fairly superficial test. I don't know how reliable it is over time, but if we are gonna do field testing, is there any way we could put in a, a mobile breathalyzer and require somebody who was suspected of DUI to take that particular test? The thing I worry about is how reliable is waving a finger in somebody's face and watching their eyes move back and forth? It seems like that's a pretty weak system to accuse somebody of a very serious offense. And if, if it's, I don't know how statistically how accurate it proves to be, it may be better than I think it is, but it just seems like it's a little weak. And it seems like if we are gonna do that sort of thing, we ought to have a more scientific test in the field to make these kind of accusations.
We didn't have Chief City come in to address that specifically, but I do believe we have field sobriety tests that are, breathalyzers that are out there, but sometimes people choose not to, to take that.
The breathalyzer was available in this policeman's car and?
I don't want to get into the specifics of this case, but I do believe that the--
But I mean, it seemed like that was a pretty weak test. And maybe it's not, maybe statistically it's, it's valid, but I don't, it doesn't give you much confidence in the, the situation circumstances.
Yeah. Councilman, the officers are trained basically to do certain tests and recognize certain behaviors and that's what that's for. I mean, that isn't a definitive test. The breathalyzer is offered and they have the right to either take it or deny it.
And the breathalyzer is, is there on?
No, no. They're, they're still, if the officer recognizes, is trained to recognize symptoms of, of, of drinking, of actually being intoxicated. So they'll make the arrest and offer the person the opportunity to take the breath test. And that, that breathalyzer is located at the county jail where they actually are given the opportunity. They can also ask for a blood test whereby we take them to the hospital and give them the blood test. So, I mean, a, a breathalyzer in the field would really not be conducive, it doesn't even exist, really. It's not really, it wouldn't be absolute if you, you know, if you had one of those breathalyzers in the field.
Yeah, well, I think if you're looking for absolutes, I think, you know, waving a finger in somebody's face and, and quote, training our officers is not an absolute either.
No, it's not.
A blood test or a breathalyzer test is gonna be absolute.
Absolutely. And that, the, the finger is not a definitive test. It just gives the officer one more element to determine whether or not that person, he thinks that person's been drinking or not. The smell, his breath, the smell of alcohol on his person or in the vehicle, whether or not that person can walk straight, whether or not that person can stand, slurred speech, bloodshot eyes, all those things, including the finger, are, are taken into consideration because the officers also understand that a person could be, have an epileptic episode and not be able to follow the finger correctly. But it could be, or having a medical condition. So it's in and of itself, it's not a definitive test. And those things have to be considered as, as elements in and of themselves when that officer testifies to what he, he witnessed in the field. But he's gotta have, the officers have to have some types of physical recognition to be able to determine whether or not that person, there's probable cause to arrest that person for, for actually drinking and driving. So they're not, they, it doesn't tell you how much they've been drinking.
Because I could imagine that somebody just being stopped by a police officer, you know, would be traumatic. Most of our citizens would consider that traumatic. I'm sure we have some routine, but, and I, I think that in itself would cause some inability to pass some of these field sobriety tests. And so I just think we need to be very, very careful when we do those sort of things because I think we run the risk of unfairly putting somebody in a position of having to defend themselves against something that they didn't do because of circumstances.
Right. You're right.
Well, the field sobriety test is just the beginning of a process and, and failing a field sobriety test, going to, to county, having the ability to blow the breathalyzer, if the breathalyzer, if they do that and it comes back negative, then the officer has the option to determine whether that there's anything to go forward from that point on or not. They could be, actually, they could be released at that point, I assume.
Right. But if they're still, I mean, if a person still seems to be intoxicated and they flunked the breath, breathalyzer, they could still be under the influence of narcotics. And at that point, a blood test might be in order and if there's still those types of symptoms, they can still be arrested based on probable cause and the observations of the officers. But again, it's a totality of the different, you know, different types of elements that the officer sees when, when, you know, when making that decision that they have probable cause. It wouldn't be just one thing. If that, if that's all he failed was inability to follow your finger, but he walked perfectly straight, had no smell of alcohol, there probably wouldn't be enough probable cause there for an officer to arrest that person. So, I mean, you're, you're right. I mean, you, but the officers are trained to recognize those types of different, different symptoms and, you know, weaving and being passed out behind a vehicle or something like that's just another indicator, but in totality, those are the things the officers have to consider.
That concludes items from Council City Manager reports.
We've got a couple of reports. Before we get into that, Councilman Shadid, I do want to get back to your comments about the occupational health, the clinic that you visited last week. And that is becoming a, a, a more of a trend is to have at least the clinics on, on site for, for, whether it's private companies or, or other governmental agencies. And so we will be looking into that and seeing what the costs are. That's a little out of the comfort box for us, but that's okay. We need to do and investigate and see, you know, it's not our core service, but maybe, maybe it still is the, the way to do it and, and it can be cost effective. So we will be looking in that primarily and then looking at the, at the pharmacy issue secondary as we, as we take this a step at a time. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Just to comment on that same thing. Recently, and there's been a television ads on, I see frequently, about the cost for our average citizen in this state of $548 for smoking. And I think that goes a long ways to reinforce some of Councilman Shadid's arguments about smoking cessation, session training, that we would not only see a benefit directly to the citizens through the cost of the city, but there would be an overall benefit that would accrue in fact that our overall statewide costs of smoking are gonna be--
Over the last months, if not years, there's been discussions about when do we need to have traffic studies done as a part of, of development process? So the Planning Commission's had this discussion and we've required them for prime time, but we really didn't have the criteria as to exactly when we require those. So with our staff and the Planning Commission, we've developed some criteria. We've gone out into the, into the community and met with, with potential developers, potential stakeholders in regard to this issue. Randy Ans is here today, our, our transportation planner in the Planning Department, to come forth and, and discuss some of, some of the proposals here. Randy?
Thank you. As you said, I'm here to provide information about the policy, the Planning Commission that requires traffic to impact analysis and kind of the scope of those traffic, traffic to impact analysis as they occur. A little background, it is, was essentially done for two reasons. Planning Commission requested planning staff develop a policy in order to get more information and more consistent information as they consider land use applications. There was another process kind of going on at the same time. There was a review of Public Works processes and it, it had recommended that a process for traffic studies or traffic to impact analysis be more formalized. It was a little ad hoc at the time. Staff from both departments worked on what is being put in place. We reviewed other cities, how they typically do it. We found a model that we felt, felt fit Oklahoma City really well and then adjusted it to our needs, more or less. Why the need for traffic studies? It, it is a review of infrastructure needs prior to development, which I think we all feel is a good idea. The Planning Commission's goal was to have the best information they, they could when making decisions and when possible, mitigate any issues before they made that decision and before they arise. One of the big things was consistency. Planning Commission wanted more consistency in, in when they received and what they received as far as information. And it also is consistent, more consistent for the applicant. It, it lets them know when traffic to impact analysis is required and what is required in that analysis. The process is structured. It applies to all zoning and preliminary plat applications. For zoning, it ensures, or tries to ensure that the infrastructure's in place as a use is intensified, or at least there's a, a plan for that. For plats, it also takes into account infrastructure, but it takes into the, into account the connections to the street system, the intensity of the development, circulation, lining for other streets, sight distance, things of that nature. The scope of the, the traffic studies is based on how much traffic it's expected to generate. When I say scope, I mean area that's looked at and time horizon that it's looked at. We do have some exclusions for, for small projects. Now, generally though, we have four levels of review and like I said, they're based on trip generation. For example, a level one is something that would generate less than 100 peak, 100 peak hour trips. I have an example here that's not in traffic generation language for those of us who don't have to deal with it every day. Basically, what you'd be looking at there is the, the date that it opened and the entrances to the site, to make sure their movements are safe for everybody who'd be coming to visit that site. At the other end of the spectrum is a level four, that's anything over 1,200 peak hour trips. And we look at the opening year, five years out, 10 years out, as it's expected to progress, and then what it would look like at build out. And we look at the major intersections in a one mile radius of that site. Now, like I said, for those of us who don't deal in trip generation rates every day, here are some examples. For a single-family residential development of less than 100 units, that would be a level one. Between 100 and 500 would be a level two and then up to 1,185 would be a level three. We reviewed the last two years of preliminary plats. Only one preliminary plat fell into that level three, most of them were a level two. And that was the Village Verde, which was three quarters of a section, so a very large development. The general office and shopping center shown there is shown in square feet. Something like a Walmart would fall into a level three. Something quite large like a regional shopping center would fall into a level four. Planning staff and traffic management staff will be reviewing these. We look at them, there's some overlap in our review, but we do look at different things. Planning looks at the impact on the street segments, capacity issues, things of that nature. We look at the long-term impacts and we look at capacity mainly as our, our issue. Traffic management looks at the impacts on the intersections, turning movements, sight distances, the need for signals, things of that nature. It's pretty immediate and it's, it's functional improvements are what they're looking at. February 20th, the policy requirement will begin and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, Pat?
Would this be a basis for turning down an application for zoning?
It, it could be, I would assume by the Planning Commission. It's information for them. Hopefully, we could mitigate the, any issues that would arise or at least come up with a plan to mitigate those before.
Who is responsible now for preparing the traffic study?
Certified engineer.
Okay, I mean, the applicant is the one who's--
The applicant, yes.
And has, has the Planning Commission or the city come up with a list of approved engineering facilities or offices or companies that can do this kind of work?
There, there are several companies, but they don't say that do it.
No, the answer to that is no. We do not have a list of who we require or put in as, as traffic engineers, nor do we tell them who they can use for architects or who we can tell them that applicant uses a civil engineer as they, as they develop their projects.
We just provide them what information they need to provide in the study and--
You're assuming that the engineering people are competent. If they're licensed, they should--
They're, they're licensed, yeah, there's, they're supposed to be licensed engineers.
Do we need to do anything in our ordinances to, to recognize the fact that the traffic study would be a, a mechanism or a basis for turning down a zoning application?
You could, yeah.
We could, do we have to?
You don't have to.
So they could turn it down--
It is automatically one of the factors on a zoning regulation under the state statute and also under our code provision. We have a general provision that traffic can be in fact.
Randy, how do we deal with the area, like for instance, at a, at a, you know, intersection where there are four corners and we get a traffic study from the first corner and do we, do we need to get traffic studies for subsequent quarters as they, if they come in with traffic impacts that are ostensibly less than the one that was originally prepared?
It's always difficult to, to account for development that might occur. We do build in some background traffic or we ask them to build in-- in some background traffic, or we ask them to build in background traffic to try to account for that. And we put in the application to check with city staff and to see what known developments are going on and what other traffic studies are in the areas. That can be accounted for. So, it's not looking at a site in a vacuum anymore. That's about all we can do to solve that problem.
Thank you, John.
While he's still, if you don't mind, Meg, while you're still on that subject, go back to the level one, two, three, four.
Don't want to-
Okay. Now, go back to the other one. Under level one, you only do entrance at the site. And following up on what Pat said, if they stay on, now go back to the other one, they stay under how many dwelling units? 100?
100, basically.
Yeah. By the time you do less than 100 on all four corners, or you do less than 100, stack two or three down the section line road, if you only do the entrance to the site, you're not capturing what the, what the impact of that whole thing is doing. So, you know, I've got a specific corner out there in my ward that they keep developing all around it, but they do it in individual little pockets and, and it's not showing the real impact of the intersection itself.
And in an area that's developing in, developing in a quick manner or in that manner, we can increase that background traffic to try to account for some of that stuff to show those, that there's going to be an increased impact even by a small development.
So, if you, if you do one development that's under 100 and it, and you only do the entrances and it passes, or what, okay. Then you do the next one, do you add what was on the first one in? Or you still only do the entrance to the, to the, if it's less than 100?
Well, that traffic from the first one will be in the traffic study if it's already in place. You wouldn't necessarily add those other entrances, no.
Now, when you say entrances, are you talking about just passing by an entrance? Are you talking about using the entrance?
Talking about the functional part of the entrance as well. So, it'd be traffic in and out of that entrance. So-
But-
And traffic on the street.
It would capture traffic going to the next unit down?
Yes.
Okay. Meg?
So, my question, Randy, is I maybe, I just don't understand. And if you went back one slide again, I think-
Okay.
It talks about the study horizon, and it says opening year. Is that before the, I don't see where we're requiring these studies before the project's approved.
Well, for a smaller project like a level one project, it would be the date that it opened. That would be when the study, the impacts are being shown. So, with any traffic study, you kind of show a baseline of what's there now. You take into account background traffic, and then you show the impact of the development. So, the opening year would actually be the opening date. As you get at larger developments, opening year, it would be mainly the, the opening date. But so many times, they have different parts that fit in, different stores open at different times, or there's a residential part and a commercial part. So, that, and that's why the five-year and 10-year.
Well, then I'm a little bit confused about how we use this as a mechanism to deny an application if the traffic study's not done until the project opens.
The traffic study is showing a projection of the impact of that opening date.
Those are the scenarios that the traffic study is looking at.
Okay, it's looking at what will happen-
It's looking ahead to that.
On opening date, okay. That's what I-
As they-
That's what I just was-
Sorry.
Traffic studies are being completed at the time of the zoning applications approved by the Planning Commission.
Got it. That wasn't clear to me.
Sorry. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Larry?
This particular process here and, and the chart we're looking at here determines, if we approve this, when a traffic study will be done based on these numbers. Am I understanding that correctly?
It determines when and if it will be done and the scope of the study-
And the scope.
How large it has to be.
Then that data goes to the Planning Commission. There, there's no guidelines as to what they do with that data, nor are there guidelines what we do with it when it comes to us. We have to, each one of us has to, correct me if I'm wrong, interpret that data and say, hey, I think this is a good deal, or I think this is a bad deal. Is that-
Well, staff looks at the data as it comes in and makes recommendations to the-
And makes recommendations. But people can look at those recommendations and, and come up with different conclusions. So, this is not an ironclad scientific type of a-
There's some art involved, yes.
And the classic one, without going into anything per, a number of years ago, somebody put a truck stop at I-40 in Morgan Road, and it was one truck stop. I don't believe there was a traffic study done. This goes back 15, maybe 20 years ago. What's evolved out of there are three more truck stops at each corner, and it took a $30 million new interchange to rectify the situation. And so, this is intended to try to keep that from, to know where we're going on these things as we look out into the future on the magnitude.
Correct. It's to know where we're going and not necessarily to prevent development from happening, but to know that we're going to have to provide some infrastructure out there in order to serve that development.
Or they may have to.
Or they may have to.
So, this is not a preventive, preventive development measure. It's trying to enlighten development as we go out.
It's to try to make it, our road system is safe and it operates at a level of service that we all like.
Well, I think it's more, I think it's so that we can make, the Planning Commission and the Council can make informed decisions as the development occurs.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Randy?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Next item is to have Dwight Scott come down and talk to us a little bit about the activities at the zoo, which have been numerous. Apparently, it's a historic year.
Took me a moment to gather myself. Well, good morning, everyone. It's great to see you again. We have certainly had a great year at the zoo this past year. And as Jim mentioned, you can tell by my first slide, a historic year. We set a, a single year attendance record. 982,000 guests came to the zoo last year. When you look at our metro area, that's a pretty incredible saturation rate. I love this photo here. This is, we might have to do a traffic analysis of the Adventure District during spring break. This could be a level four. We, we filled up the zoo and Science Museum lots. Guests had parked all the way down in the Remington lots towards McDonald's. So, just to give you a visual on the, on the, the traffic, that's a pretty incredible feat. And then, you know, congratulations to all the zoo staff for their hard work handling the incredible crowds we've had. So, the 982,000, 106,000 were during the week of spring break. So, how did we get to that point? Well, of course, Asha and Chandra are back at the zoo. They were in Tulsa for about two and a half years. They came back the fall of 2010, and then we debuted those girls in their new exhibit for spring break of 2011. It's a beautiful facility. I know many of you have been out several times to see it. Here's a 200,000 gallon pool the elephants have to get in and play around. And there's some large shade structures there for them as well. It is an Asian themed exhibit. You know, these elephants are Asian elephants, so we wanted to create somewhat of an immersive environment for our guests. Thank you, sir. One of the most popular areas in the facility is the demonstration pavilion. This really allows our guests to get an up-close, personal view of our elephants, and they really get to see some of the behind-the-scenes training that our elephant staff does with them, all based on positive reinforcement, operant conditioning, training. We've also opened a zoo museum, the Patricia Byron J. Gambula Zoo Museum. It's a, we are the first zoo in the country to have a zoo museum, which is appropriate because we have incredible history, incredible support from our community, going back to 1949 when the children of Oklahoma City raised pennies to buy Judy for the elephant. And then, of course, the I Want a Hippopotamus or Christmas Gala PB song back in the 50s. I'll speak more about Gala here, here in a few minutes. After all that, we were blessed to have the birth of, of an Asian elephant, the first ever at the Oklahoma City Zoo, Mei Li, as she is very well-known now. She is doing great. She was 304 pounds when she was born. She's almost 1,100 pounds now. Here's a photo of Mei Li. She's growing quickly, but you can still see how small she is compared to the adults in the group, her mom and her aunt. She's a ball of energy, very active, just great, great experience for guests to come out and see her. She loves swimming in the pool when it's a little bit warmer. A little scary for me, the first time she was in the pool, though, and she dipped down underneath the water and everyone looked for her, and then her trunk came up. So, we knew she was still breathing and everything, and then she floated right back up to the surface. We had another very significant birth this year, four Sumatran tiger cubs. There's only about 300 Sumatran tigers left in the wild. This is a one male and three females. They're beautiful animals. Sometimes I go back and forth with this photo. Is this a painting or is this a photo? They're just stunning animals. Mom's done a great job with the cubs. Not a birth, but a significant addition this year. We, we brought in a new chimpanzee named Suri, and she came to us from the Sunset Zoo in Manhattan, Kansas. And she was born to the oldest chimpanzee ever to give birth at 56 years of age. And she was not doing very well. We don't know if it was because of poor maternal skills or probably was a problem with the, the quality of mom's milk for her, to be honest with you. So, we brought her to Oklahoma City. The staff worked tirelessly to get her back into great shape, 24/7 for months and months. And we have since introduced her to our group. This is Suri being held by Zoe, one of our, our other young chimps in the group, and she's doing very, very well. This fall, we opened a giraffe feeding experience so guests can get up close with these big, beautiful animals. I've never had so many people thank me for allowing a giraffe to slime them. It is a great experience. I mentioned Gala P. V. Henderson previously. Gala was here right before the holidays to celebrate the I Want a Hippopotamus or Christmas song and what that meant to the zoo. She's a wonderful lady, wonderful Oklahoman, and you can tell by the, the response there in that photo on the right. Her, Gala and her song is just as popular now as it was back in the 1950s. Our newest addition, Rex, 8,500 pound animal. He is in great shape. You can see his tusks there, considerable ivory. And we are in the early processes of introducing Rex to Chandra, the aunt of Mei Li. Keep your fingers crossed. Hopefully, in after 22 months gestation period, we'll have another, another elephant calf at the zoo and a little one for Mei Li to play with.
Mayor to be ready for the State of the City speech.
Right on time. This is a mayor elephant. I mean, a mayor Mick. It really meant a lot to the zoo staff, Mayor, to have you mention us in the State of the City address and, and then for coming out to the zoo two weeks ago for the announcement of that this city's going on a diet campaign, hitting the 1 million pound loss mark. And we're certainly behind you on that initiative. The zoo was just recognized as certified healthy business by the Oklahoma State Department of Health. So, we understand the importance of moving that, that initiative forward as well. We are incredibly fortunate to have a one-eighth of a cent sales tax dedicated to the zoo, passed by the voters back in 1990. And we want to be extremely appreciative and sensitive to the fact so that no one is unable to come to the zoo because of an admission fee. So, we have quite a few free days and reduced admission days. I apologize for all the, all the text on this slide, but these are all of our free days, starts with the calendar year in January, February. In fact, this last Martin Luther King Day was a beautiful weather day. We budgeted 8,000 on our attendance for the month of January. We had 13, or we had 12,900 just on MLK Day. So, it was an incredible day. Mother's Day, Father's Day, of course, free admission with any paid admission. Sales Tax Appreciation Day, which is our most important free day. As always, my favorite, if you bring a pumpkin larger than her head, you get in for the zoo. And we're doing our pumpkin drive for Haunt the Zoo, Veterans Day, and then the day before Thanksgiving is always free at the zoo. And then annually, we have a great relationship with Dr. Pepper, and we always have a free admission with the Dr. Pepper can promotion throughout the summer. And Zookeeper Appreciation Week, free child admission withdrawing with their favorite animal. And then, as always, we allow guests to bring in food or drinks. So, we, we believe that our admission is, is great value where it is, but we just want to make sure that everyone has the option to come to the zoo and experience all the fun and spend time with her family and friends and be active and be outside and hopefully get connected with nature and be excited about all the wildlife and all the great plants we have out at the zoo. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dana. Dana's Executive Director of Zoological Society. And Dana's going to talk about some of the accomplishments and highlights this past year from the Zoological Society. And then she's going to talk about a really important project we have upcoming for next year, a new zoo veterinary hospital. Morning.
It sure is different standing up here before you, three years later. When I first started, I was challenged and my team was challenged and Dwight was challenged to make a difference. We were, OZS was working very hard, but not giving a tremendous amount of support back to the zoo, not in the level that we thought we should be able to give. City Council challenged us to meet 100% of membership dollars back to the zoo each and every year. This year, I'm proud to say we met that goal by 200% of dollars back to the zoo. Our membership is so vital and so important, but the private support is making a huge difference, and it's going to continue to make a huge difference. And it's so great to be behind a purpose-driven project and see how amazing our zoo is and how amazing our city is. So, it's really great to be here today. It's, I'm not shaken like I did last time. We started the year in March, really, where we unveiled the Elephant Pavilion. The Innis Much Foundation gave us the largest gift in 20 years of $250,000 to really begin our, our fundraising climb. Our Zoo Fund for Kids program has just gone through the roof. We are giving between 50 and $65,000 a year to schools to come into the zoo to experience an educational program and to go out onto zoo grounds. Last year, Council challenged us to get out there and make sure the schools knew about our program. So, I went with Councilman Kelly. We visited several schools in Ward Seven, and then I took the initiative to go out to some of the other wards and really focus in on the schools and help them with the grant process. That being said, we had 118 grants submitted, the largest in history. We've given, it's 13 years old now, and we've given about $1.3 million back to the schools and to the zoo. Our community support is vital. Mathis Brothers has entered their fifth year with us with our membership program. They sold 4,108 new and renewed memberships. That's a huge endeavor because we are, under our memorandum of interest standing, we don't give more than a $10 discount on our Zoo Friends membership. So, more dollars are coming back to the zoo. Well, Mathis Brothers, they cut that discount and they give about a $25 discount, but they make up the dollars. So, it's a philanthropic gift as well as an opportunity for our members to get a greatly reduced membership. It's been a phenomenal program, and I can't thank them enough. Our events also went through the roof this year. Our Osterdigg Breakfast hit its 25th anniversary. That is our family, kind of family fun event. It's a big breakfast out at the zoo. We had about 2,800 people come in for this event. And then our Zubulation, we sold out. It was a great year and a great time to say that our events are becoming more and more fundraising oriented as well as a destination event, and that's exciting. We also sold out with Zuberu 3. So, we're just going to continue the path. Well, the littlest members of the community also can make an impact. So, they started Rex's trek for us this year. And that 1950s where they gave the pennies to Judy, well, in 2011, the kids came back in and gave pennies to bring in Rex. And so, that was a great campaign. It was fun to work with Westwood Elementary. They kicked it off. It was just phenomenal to see these little kids come in with so much energy and passion for the zoo, and now they have a story to tell. You know, so many people come in and talk to us about, I helped with Judy, or I helped with, and these kids now have that story for future generations. I'm very, very excited. Once again, you challenged the society to step up. We are stepping up. We're going to do a 50/50 campaign with the zoo, which is great. We're raising $4.5 million for the new veterinarian hospital. We're in planning phases, and I'm glad to say that we're about 65% of the way there. We're hoping to move into a public launch in May, and the zoo has got their money allocated. So, you're going to see an amazing facility come on board. The first gift that came in was from the Kirkpatrick Philanthropies. They came in in July and really started the planning process and put it into motion. We then spent many weeks with the zoo going through the process to get to what we need to really show the zoo and Oklahoma City's commitment to care. And this is the schematics of what that is going to look like. This hospital is, if you can envision Oklahoma Trails and you're looking out over the bison yard at that very tip of Oklahoma Trails, you will be looking out onto the hospital. You can go up through Oklahoma Trails, or you can come back through Giraffe Loop. And what is really important about this is that it's going to become a destination in the zoo, and it's going to show people a firsthand look at what our veterinarian staff do. You're going to be able to look- You're going to be able to look in to our surgical suite, you're going to be able to look into the treatment rooms and truly see what goes on behind the scenes in the zoo and how much animal welfare means to the zoo. So it's been a great three years. I truly, you hear me say it all the time, I love my job. I love working with Dwight Scott and his staff. It's just phenomenal and I think that our upward trajectory is going to continue. So thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the zoo? I know the council shares my excitement and enthusiasm for all that the zoo does and that the citizens made this a priority of themselves over 20 years ago and I don't think they regret it one bit. I think we're very proud and especially enjoy the, the babies that have been born in, in the past year and the different species. Yeah, David?
Mayor, if I may just say this, you know, it's a great destination point currently for adults, families and especially the children, and it's only going to improve. And I'm sorry to bring this up, but I just think the potential with the new animal research facility even has greater potential for, from an economic development standpoint. And at some point in time, it will rival what we have at the OU Medical Research in regards to the biotech industry, especially in Oklahoma with, with us still being a fairly good-sized agricultural-based state. I think having this research facility is, is just great news and appreciate the Kirkpatrick family for making this donation possible. And I just think it's, it's got a very bright future. And I'm sorry to keep bringing up economic development, but that's how we grow and provide more services for the citizens of Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Dwight?
Yeah, we are actually really positioning ourselves to be a, a part of a, an animal welfare and research push here in the state. We have a close relationship with Oklahoma State University Veterinary Program and there are some other organizations here locally we're working with. So you're right, it'll, it'll really help us kind of move that program to the next level.
Right. Just, I'm thrilled with everything. Just one, I just want to plant a bug in your ear and this is just very difficult to go to places like this in Oklahoma City with your children and have healthy food choices. And the zoo is probably, there's, you know, there's not a lot of healthy choices. I have some concern about a Dr. Pepper promotion. That's a source of, for our children of fueling the obesity epidemic. Dr. Pepper, I think, takes it to another level. If you look at the amount of sugar that's in Dr. Pepper, it is at the front of the pack. So I just, I have some concerns about having a Dr. Pepper promotion and associating that with children. And just anything you can do to increase healthy options while children are visiting the zoo would be great.
Sure. We, we actually looked at healthy options on our menu several years ago and this probably won't surprise you, they didn't do very well at all. But there's now a whole new push on this area and we're ready to, to look at more options again. In fact, we just talked about it a couple of weeks ago. And so we're doing some things, not only for our staff internally, but also externally as well. And we also want to just, just remind everyone that the zoo's a great place to come and walk and be active and have, you know, have a great time with your family. Some, sometimes workouts aren't that fun, guys, so it's kind of good to go somewhere where you're not really thinking about walking and, you know, visit with your family.
You can certainly walk a lot at the zoo, you're right. If you go see the giraffes and the elephants, you're going to, you're going to get a good walk in. They need lots of room. Thanks Dwight, appreciate it.
Yeah, just real quick, we have a great team at the zoo and I, I get way too much credit for all the success that's going on out there. We have a great zoological trust and several of you are members, of course. The, the team at the zoo is extremely dedicated and you can just see the strong partner we have in the Zoological Society now, thanks to Dana's leadership. So credit should go where it's, where it's deserved.
Thanks Dwight. Other city manager reports?
Also in the packet, we have a proactive code enforcement update and then we have the January 12 sales and use tax collections. January is a very strong month for us. We were about a million dollars over target, about 8% over previous year. And that's really good, it's really positive, but remember, we're, we're coming out of a dip. And so we were, you know, it isn't, you know, we had the strong growth and we dropped down and we're, we're kind of getting back to where we would have been before the dip. And so they're really strong numbers, but you got to put things in context as, as we look at these numbers. And we will be going into those type of trends and future trends in more detail next week when we have our financial workshop.
One of the things, if we could extrapolate our historical performance four, five years before the dip and compare that historical growth pattern with what we actually achieved, I think that would be interesting.
I think that's one of the slides for next week, Mr. Schrempf.
Good, good. But we had strong growth in '04, '05, '06, '07, '08. It was like 5, 6, 7% generally, yeah. Yeah. Is that it for city manager reports?
That's it.
All right, citizens to be heard. We have one person that's signed up, Joe Sarge Nelson. Good morning, Sarge. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
This has been quite an interesting session for me. I think the last time I was here, I was over at the Skirvin Hotel. But anyway, Mr. Shaddit, I've watched you on the news getting elected. I listened to Mr. Pete White's comments a while ago and naturally I was very interested to see Ms. Salyer sitting up there because I've watched her and Mr. Ryan over the years. I don't like to have distasteful things and I guess kind of like Mr. White, I get a little disturbed. And I'm basically here over Skip. And I don't know exactly how to address this, you hit some of the high points. I lost five members of my family, my father being one. My biggest problem is that I've learned over the given period of time, people that smoke, mess with drugs or drink, first they got to face it, then they got to deal with it. And the doctors do the best they can. But if the patient don't get a hold of it and deal with it, the end result is devastating. And usually the alcoholic problem is probably worse than a drug issue or even a cigarette issue. I like Skip, but he's going to have to get help. And he's the first one that's going to have to realize that's what he's got to do. In '09, he should have known it and I'm sure back in places that we don't see in here that he's faced it or he's trying to. But until he had something tragic really get a hold of him personally, and I don't mean a family member or something like that, he's going to have to get a grip on it, he's going to have to look at it. And I'm sure his family's already told him immensely amount of times, he's going to have to deal with this. And this last time, I made up my mind, I said, if they can't help him, an outsider might be able to. What he did this last time was totally uncalled for and he, you know, saying I'm sorry doesn't excuse that fact. And I'm sure deep down in his heart he was. I was going to ask you people with this letter to call for his resignation. Deep in my heart, I don't really want to. I don't know how to help the man. In '93, when I lost my dad, never mind, I don't even want to go there. If I present these documents to you people, will you read them and act on them? All it is, is a simple thing, telling facts you already know. The only way is his friends can help him, is to have him step down and face what he's got to face and then let him come back. Then you'll know he's made it and he is everything he is supposed to be. And that's about all I got to say. And do I pass these out?
Yeah, you can come over here and pass those out. Joe, thanks for coming down. We have executive session, the council will return in a few minutes.